Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June first work session to oral school board. Call this meeting of order. This part will be put into vocal.
He's got a mark.
Yes.
You have a problem?
No, no, you just have to mark it, but Mike's online and Lance is on his way. Mr. Harold.
Thanks. Usually not one to read from a script, but it's an idea that I made, so I'm gonna stick with these three. It was a deep sadness. I resigned from the oral school district. I've been in a tough spot going where and what the future holds for myself and my family. I applied to the Ag End possession position here at Laurel in spring in two thousand and eleven. Knowing no one, it was a leap of faith and a shot in the dark for a twenty-one-year-old freshman college. I knew I would have nailed the interviews and make a great first impression. I was nervous and excited at the same time as standing four years old and those same feelings today. Six months ago, I told you I was Spartan for life. Over Christmas break, the dawn news still to this day, I consider unbearable. My father was diagnosed with having an unidentified mass on his liver. Fast forward four months, we now know he has a great lung cancer. And through some surgery a month ago to remove the gallbladder, part of his liver and many lymph nodes, we have tried our best to give him a chance against this very terrible disease. My dad's in trouble. He knows that. We all know that. It's extremely difficult to accept. Many of us in this room will be lost without the direction of our fathers and their doubt. Still to this day, we'll come to him and even be part of each other's success. My father is no different. He manns over four hundred acres of crop fields, nearly a hundred head of cow. Maintenance is farm equipment of all kinds, all while trying to be a family man and four kids, and now six grandkids. I'm a man of deep faith. I've poured on that faith for body healing and understanding my father during these times. I believe in my dad. If anyone can beat the odds, my money will always be on my father. I've called on that same faith to direct the future of Melvin and myself and my family. Would you believe me if I told you to school where I did my student teaching Somerset area? Had the Ag teacher resign earlier this year? The very same school that I was still student teaching in when I was doing my interviews to come to Laurel. Reminds you of the old saying, when one door closes, another opens. I have no doubt that the good Lord provided me this opportunity. As I said before, my dad's in trouble. In a conversation with him, along with my siblings, his one request was for him to continue to grow and succeed, not to falter. He has poured his heart and soul into the farm, working hard daily to see that he provided for his four children. It's a request that feels an easy obligation for one to fulfill. When carrying out that request, there's a lot tougher than it sounds. Seeing this as an opportunity to continue to do what I've granted all the Laurel, be teaching students about agriculture. The opportunity to now commute the eleven miles from the farm to Somerset High School daily. I can fulfill the wishes of my father for continued growth in this farm and pursue the career I decided to enter into in fall of two thousand and seven at West Virginia University. I have successfully claimed, and I've been hired by the Somerset Area School District, as the Ag End instructor and advocate of it. My success here at Laurel was built upon what I learned and did at Somerset. My success at Somerset will be built on what I've done here at Laurel. It's bittersweet, mainly bitter right now. It's full circle. It was not an easy decision. If there's one thing I've learned from this experience, it says, likes to know about the hand you pick, it's about working with the hand you've been dealt. But along six months, I've been back and forth, I'm either gonna go back to my roots at the farm, with my family, or to keep my roots here, because I've worked so hard to establish. My wife landed the dream job within the Somerset Area School District as well. An elementary teacher for most desired age of students to teach. The stars aligned. It's the decisions that really almost were made for us. The good Lord works in mysterious ways. It's not my job to understand it. It's my job to accept it. Thank you for your time. Thank you for the opportunity to serve at Laurel School District. I hope my time here has been positive. Stevens. Black Cleveland administration. School work. And Laurel community as a whole. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Harold, speaking to myself, I would be very disappointed if you didn't take this opportunity, take it into the field. You should be very proud of the program you don't have.
Thank you.
Travis, let me miss. Can you play it down longer here?
First chase.
So much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You want to get any drink? I'm just gonna record. Which is rare for me.
I'll tell you this, if you're funny, you gotta go once a kiss.
Hold that.
But thank you for everything you've done for us.
Thank you very much.
Wish you and your family to be happy, father, whatever. And anything we can do to help us, no? If we got any problems, we send them right away.
There's a lot of school bus kids that are coming along.
Do you have a brother that's a Berak teacher by chance?
I do.
There you are. Well, send him.
He's, uh, he's employed within Somerset family as well.
Oh, okay. Oh.
Here, a few more days. A few more days. The more the longer the process of. Where's the fees?
Pretty appreciate that for sure.
Get out of here. Yeah.
Did you grab that?
No, I didn't. Okay. Let's move to I M E recognition of meetings for next week, where we will be recognizing the May eleventh executive session for discipline. The regular board meeting. The executive session for personnel. On May twelfth, the finance committee meeting, and on May twenty-sixth, the wellness meeting. Item number two, promise. Mr. Rich, you're gonna do that something?
Yes, so it's that time of year we recognize our retirees. So you'll be recognized in Dr. Lori Beto, Mrs. Patty Miles, and Mrs. Brenda Mogi for their years of service here at Laurel and wish them the best of the top.
Item number three, reports for outstanding members of the company, like we had already said in meetings earlier. So we will go to admin supervision.
On Ostrac, just getting started, you're up to maintenance for upcoming respect. We've been working on buses all along, but we've often, do what all we can do that's ready again. They'll be here to pay after the fourth of July this year, so we've got four employees here to work on. But they're all pretty cliche. Also, we're gonna be getting, the other buses ready to be getting ready to learn this, but it's not our question, it's three million points. And so we can get the free things. You might start on end to end. And also, I've been looking at the routes and, uh, I drove a lot, so I know a lot of the crannies with all the routes, and some of them are like, why down this road? So my method is an old school method where you take a map. I have a map along this route, you can down here and see it. It's hard when you look at a computer screen, you see one route at a time, so using raceable markers in different colors, you do all the routes on the map, and you can see who's touching it, who's pulling down the same road. And you can see that this bus is all by itself over here, nobody can go here that one, there's another one over here, so that's not a route that you can change, somebody's gotta go out there. So there's only a couple that kind of cross each other, so. How we doing it? See, if I can improve them. Um, there's a couple that, you know, that are longer on the high school, that we need to get down to the elementary sooner, so that's what, that's what I want to improve. Um, just to make them a little tighter, that's the first thing.
Do we have a percentage of ridership utilization, preschoolers or?
I did last year, I don't know, but there are some buses that are sixty-eight kids, supposedly supposed to ride, but.
So if you, if you look at drivers in the elementary for the pickup, on the start to pickup, your pickup list, right? You have a pickup list every day, right? How many kids on average should they pick? Probably fifty to sixty. It's fifty to sixty, right? About five hundred, five hundred and fifty kids, talking eighty-five, ninety percent ridership in the elementary, and the same pickup list to probably drop off give or take, right? So our elementary ridership is consistently eighty-five to ninety percent. About how many drivers do you think there are at Student Park and other? Okay, about forty to fifty. Forty to fifty drivers, how many people total numbers, maybe one passenger, maybe one passenger, right? So if you call it seventy-five to a hundred, okay? So we probably have two-thirds to seventy-five percent on the way in at the secondary level. We could probably do, we only had to go by numbers, we could probably do two buses on the secondary afternoon between the kids who drive home, stay for events, whatever. I mean, on, on the way home, so we schedule how many kids per bus on average, thirty-five, forty? On average, some are, some are more packed, and we average five to six per bus on the secondary run. I know.
Now, there's a few that have ten kids, just a few that have twenty kids, but usually we still gotta make that pass, because that one kid is all the way up. You know, and that's just the way it is.
I get it.
You gotta run that route, whether you got five kids or twenty-five kids.
So you can't really see it at the high school, right?
No.
But if you ever have to go down the castle and when the elementary school's letting out, you would think there's no kids on those buses. Because they got cars out the driveway on the road.
Well, we got a front coming in. Yeah, it's here.
I was just curious if we had any, uh, real numbers and we ever looked at it over.
Yeah, well, when Joe and I talked, you know, so if you just look at capacity, because you, you've got a budget of seats for everybody, right? And what I like in talking about Joe is, um, at a minimum, at a minimum, those, those buses, two to a seat, every seat filled, how many kids on a bus?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, okay? So he's supposed to schedule forty-eight on every bus. So you might have some routes and hit your township that are close and overlap, but then you might have some down on, you gave something way out there on nineteen which are a grease river. Okay, so, you know, it, it's not always about having a maximum capacity when somebody's gotta go. All, all the way out, so, um, we, we start with the premise that it's forty-eight per bus, because if, if, if you have, if you have a thousand fifty kids divided by two, that's five twenty-five a run, divided by forty-eight per bus, that would mean we need eleven buses, but we run, uh, how?
Eleven times twelve, yeah.
Twelve at the elementary, so there, there's an extra one in the loop.
That's my protect bus, so she's actually doing something of it, and then.
You gotta speed up the cans and get what else, keep more plus. Any other questions?
I've worked with Mr. Lee, we're pulling cat five cables through the elementary for cameras and the wireless access points were completed at the elementary. We're gonna begin the high school next Monday. There's some heater issues in the bathrooms at the stadium, we set them installed this past week, and we also had a problem with the roof drain at high school. That's more of an event we found if I'm, if I act in this. We've had water coming to classroom and throughout one of renovations, someone cut the line when they installed the unit vent, and nobody decided to turn it, but we actually had a full unit vent completely out, but it was all by luck.
So when was the last renovation?
Ah, oh, seven.
So it's been like that for fifteen years, and for just for.
And by luck, I'll work it, but it'd be pretty hard to talk. It's kind of busy spring, uh, things closer than wanting to. Be geared up for some years.
Um, so on an exciting note, our schoolwide down at the elementary, we have that Spartan two hundred board, which is how we reward all the kids. We did drawings, Mr. Swirbly and Mrs. Neaties has got the pictures taken with the kids, but we gave ten dollar gift certificates to core bushes for the kids that won drawings from our Spartan two hundred club, so the kids were excited to get our straight certificates. Other things that's been on my plate is working on placements for next year. Our kids that are out of districts or kids that possibly need to go out of districts, just securing those placements, working on the contracts for those placements. And our kids transitioning in, meeting with all of those families who's gonna be starting kindergarten next year, working with the preschools and getting those kids plans coming into kindergarten. Our sixth grade special ed teacher also meets with our seventh grade special ed teacher, and we try to plan to help that transition from sixth to seventh grade for those students. And then I've been planning extended school year for our I M P students who require summer school.
It's always last month, so it's really busy. But first thing on there, you know, every grade level, I think, to field trips this year, we just did the last two, second, third grades, so it was great, third, we go. Had those this year, so we combined our Olympics and our mega parties, like one event, kind of split the building in half, really streamlined it, I don't know about that. I think the kids had a lot of fun, everybody seemed to enjoy it, which we don't want to downtime one day, so that, so it didn't feel like really well. We had an A R skating party that we have at Elburst, so the kids who earned all their points for every nine weeks, reading A R books, stuff to go to that. Fourth elementary band concert, we also had a reward ceremony. And then today, we had a pretty graduates, seniors came down, we paired them up with a kindergarten student, they walked around. It's always a privilege for leaving out, I've thought the last four or five years. We'll have sixth grade graduation on Friday. And I have to put that in there again, and then right now, I'm just, uh, buttoning up my summer, my summer two remediation, we do a five-week program, three days a week, some of what we did last year, but I'm gonna expand it to the upper grades this year. We identified the kids based on their assessment data, classroom performance, and then progress in locker rooms, we sent out invitations for them, so. It's a voluntary, but hopefully take advantage of it. I was able to secure right now all staff on the board, so decided to get that up in the summer and try and close that gap.
Any questions?
Well, high school, we've got a little bit going on here the last couple of days, but. Uh, student schedules are all done for twenty-two, twenty-three, that preliminary schedules based upon student requests. Tomorrow, we'll be running a modified schedule, um, the student move-up day, sixth graders are coming up, everybody will go through their twenty-two, twenty-three schedules. So you see if they got any glitches, they can get their summer work, kids and honors courses. You know, we can see if we have our course balanced, and if we have any problems, we can do it. Um, it's here. We've had a pretty exciting year here with students being honored, special recognitions, there's a list of students on there. I mean, then we have a couple P I A champions in track that are not on that list, so we've had a lot of individual student success, it's nice to see, you know, other students that respond. The next thing on the list, you'll find a A C T study in your seats. So this is from May, uh, the A C T does a study about grade inflation over the past decade. So they looked at how A C T scores have declined and how student overall grade point averages incline from two thousand and nine through, and they noticed a correlation between, they did it based upon University of Cali- California universities not taking standardized tests. Um, so they're, they're talking about how G P As have gone up, whether it be exceptions made for COVID or exceptions made over time. Now this grade inflation has become a national trend, like we saw here in order, we, we look at changing some of the things we get here to, to combat that. One of the biggest things that, that they saw was, uh, A C T went super scoring over the last couple of years, allowing you to take your best language score from a test. Let's say you took, took the test over, got a better language score, took the test in, in May, got a better math score. These, so you're able to super score on the A C T. And they're still finding a drop in A C T scores while student G P As are going up over a half percent, um, throughout this, this, this period of time. In correlation to that, what I thought was exciting for us here is, we just basically gone, undergone a large change with, um, what we had in our grading and reporting here, and then we took, we did A, we did, we done S A T in the school day here for the last three years. Our S A T and the school day scores this year have come back higher than they've ever been for our students taking that test. And again, we've had some pretty exceptional classes going through, but we've seen a higher overall score, higher bottom-end scores for those students taking S A T school day than we've ever seen. Again, I don't know if it's a trend yet or not, uh, we, we made some big changes to our grading report, we put more emphasis on testing. Um, and we saw the result of that, so we're gonna continue monitoring that over next year, and we'll report back next year to see if that's a trend or, or how things have changed, but, um, it's bigger than Laurel High School, it's bigger than what we're doing here, it's a national thing that we're looking at, that supports what we're doing. And again, increasing the rigor, increasing the emphasis on testing, trying to eliminate some of the ancillary things that can inflate grades.
That's a very good question.
And the last thing to talk about more or less was the safety committee, we discussed, we had a safety committee meeting. Mrs. Esko was there, Officer Oden came in and talked a lot of things regards to school safety, especially in light of the recent events, uh, we have some plans going forward to meet with our school police, chief of police, to now outside agencies to make sure every summer that we're doing everything we can to the best of our ability to ensure student safety.
Any questions for more? We also have for graduation.
Ready, we're going to be, we had two great days of practice, the weather, important plans is coming through tonight.
Yeah.
Hopefully gets out of here tomorrow, and we're ready to get outside at the stadium for seven P M.
How many kids?
We have ninety-two walking, well, we have ninety-two graduating. With the, all the credentials, we have ninety-two in the line.
Okay. Any other?
So, um, the eighth grade trip to Gettysburg, what Mr. Fringe was up from, I got to go with the eighth graders to Gettysburg. It was a really nice trip, well organized, everything just fell into place except the rain, it rained the whole entire day. We were soaked head to toe, the kids had a ball. There, the trip itself ran very smooth, um, Mrs. Spott, Mr. Dorash did a very nice job organizing it. Getting some feedback from the students of what they liked, what they didn't like, so that we can move forward for planning for next year. What was nice is when we had lunch, we actually had, um, we ate in an old home, and we had the whole entire place to ourselves during that time. So there was a lot of bonding. Uh, elementary band concert, I believe Mr. Swirbly mentioned that, one thing that I thought was very impressive as a newcomer was seeing that we have an elementary jazz band. And they were very impressive as, um, as an elementary group. Like Mr. Swirbly said about the field trips, lot of, lot of assemblies this last week for me. We had the extracurricular assembly, um, at the high school on Monday, the high school academic assembly, the elementary assembly for grades three through six. Um, the A R skating party, um, at, uh, the skating rink went well, um, I took the fifth and sixth graders first, and then the third and fourth graders, third and fourth, they are a little more daring, need a little more time helping to get their skates on, they either went ninety miles per hour, or they were a little, a little hungry. I'm glad to say, I think we only issued two Band-Aids the whole entire time. So graduation, big day Friday for both buildings, sixth grade will graduate in the morning, and of course, high school in the evening.
Questions for the board? Mr. Lee?
All right, just a couple of things real quick, um, we completed all of our, uh, our assessments, happy to report that all of our, our assessments have been sent back to, to D R C. We're planning for our summer projects. That'll start, that'll kick off next week, so a lot of things going on, still working on E-rate, it's a monthly process, it seems like it never ends. P boss, we just, we're going through a roster verification process, working with the principals and the teachers to say, yes, these kids are mine, blah, 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 blah. Working through all that right now too, and that's gone relatively smooth. Gonna step up while, with, with the loss of Mrs. McBride and, uh, tap into my experience in working with him, so we shouldn't miss a beat. Just gotta get caught up on where she is versus what needs done and so forth. Tickets, we had fifty-four this last month, average response time was seven hours, twenty-three minutes, resolution was two days and fifteen hours, so I have.
Questions? Let's call that.
And the place is a few weekends, so we've got the next, uh, we've got, no, we've got. Data that I have, okay? So yesterday, we have a. People could come back on if they have waived your pass, waived your time, so actually I'm like, we're like, come back on, that change. The bids were canceled, we're a little lower than employment figure, but I just, so, so. So don't forget about the number of your time used on expenditures. We'll notice when we jump. It was two options, we're writing the numbers. Um, but I can not really write something back. We've got, how we wanted it, we've got it. Um, a couple of things, uh, food service wise, we completed our triennial assessment, which that's new, uh, lead anyway, uh, I'm not sure if it's maybe trying to like, but, uh, it had been initially due in twenty, pushed two times, and then just yesterday, pushed again, um, but for another year, but we got it done last Thursday, so I'm glad we did that, it's finished, but basically it is a, it gives you that you, uh, compare your foods, your, um, wellness policy against that. So we completed that project with a diagram last Thursday, um, it's attached to board docs, um, providing rate as well. Uh, we hit most of the marks, I think, I just believe, there is some things that we probably need to do better as far as communication, it's our power wellness policy, um, but, uh, we'll, we'll hold on that, so this is kind of. Second, um, found out just this, this morning, during the webinar, um, that there are changes required for our policy of P S eight oh eight, um, which is regarding student debt, and we just get, right, um, in our charge policy and, um, our refund policy, it's, it's gone ridiculous to me that, um, uh, some of the things that they are requiring us, us to do, just to get kids their money back, when it's, um, like, for instance, if you, if someone is, go to Nick, you know, there's a year here. Um, they want you to go for a nickel and mail it to them for fifty-three cents. From the state, like, it just, it's just not, is there's, there's gotta be more refining to this, but most of this stuff, according to the today's webinar, has to go to. Back for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So um, there's supposed to be some more communication about it from the state. In the next week or so, so we'll probably have our first reading of the policy revision done in July and then about ten in August. Um, that'll have to be part of our handbook. Um, Mr. Frangio, I know you guys, everybody works on that, I think. Um, and for the website. Uh, we also, there's another change to our discrimination policy. Um, so to include gender identity in there somehow. So um, I need to also, I, the language has been provided to us in the last thing, so up there.
Come again?
Is that a dialect of the state or is it?
Believe it's USDA.
USDA.
We um, set out incorporate rate, uh, that we don't discriminate for gender identity for.
With food?
No, overall, the district.
To help USDA, yeah.
Uh, and that's, that's one of their things is their um, uh, one of the posters that we have.
It's a little bit straight call.
Yeah.
So those are my elements. One place.
With the tax in, with the half tax, the priest or the no tax increase, the fund balance is the same, so.
Allocation is the difference. Yeah, the fund balance. That fund balance is as of last year.
Okay.
So um, I did not incorporate a line in there for what it would be at the end of June to come through. But that out, fund balance allocations on the left hand side, um, right above the, where it says no tax for tax, that's the multiple come off of that.
I think that was the language for this gender identity, everything said that, it was a, there's, there's the word, I mean. Yeah, I don't know, probably recognize it, I just.
It, it's a seven page memo.
Seriously, because the, the PSBA, I've got another PNN uh, policy, I think that I don't have to go into. So of course in the next month, we can expect the teasers, right? As we get drafts, I can always push out draft, push out drafts ahead. To work at the work session, clarify a message, certainly, as drafts are available, whether it's from USDA or from the PNN. We'll have a meeting for leadership and help guide that process.
I'm, I'm having a harder time with this work stuff, man. It's just getting jammed on.
I, I'm just so confused, I just, USDA has to deal with that, I thought. Yeah. I don't know, I just thought they were the food.
There's a poster that knows.
They're the cows, something like that. Maybe what they're looking at now.
Everybody saw Kingpin, there's anything's possible.
Maybe there's some confusion with the cows.
Sky. Are you sure? Yes. Swiss. I've got a quick two minutes. Don't cut it down though, man. Mr. Allen. We got misty, don't be scared. Our. Radiant graduates, may have never gotten to see this. So. Yep. Now this, teachers and, and kindergarten schools. Including Eric Spearkins. So. In your email, I sent it to you as a YouTube link, so all you have to do. Start the country. Is.
If I do, I have to.
Just copy paste the YouTube link, they can see this. And actually.
I'm.
Yeah, that was a um, community request. Okay, I'm done with my report. I noticed, one thing I noticed is there's a lot more graduation, graduating students, kindergarten, what is that spread?
About thirty.
Going enrollment makes your kindergarten is. My part. I don't want to get girls, though. I've taken upon myself.
I don't know, just.
Yeah.
Item number five, comments and questions from before relative to agenda. Okay. Uh, next week we will be approving the minutes. For May eleventh. We will also be approving the treasurer's report. Any questions on that? Our investment report for May. As well as our bill list. We'll have our list of food services fund bills. And then we'll move to item nine, which is personnel. Eight. We will be approving the transfer of sick days for Ms. Jones. From her. Former district to moral. When do you want to talk for that?
Sure.
In excess of our policy?
So, well, um, as far as code goes, yeah, right, so. You can grant, you can grant as many days as you want as afford, but it's a typical practice to allow the twenty-five, right? And then we can give above that, that they earn, but in our contract. Um, they get compensation for sick days, those two additional days don't count towards the compensation.
All right, also elementary summer tutoring.
So this is part of our R F S or three, so Dan. Can you describe this a little bit already?
Yes. Well, he was able to secure the people.
So what are they gonna do?
So for um, it's three days a week for three hours, it'd be like an hour and fifteen minutes of ELA, an hour fifteen minutes of math. Focusing on those, those two subjects in the trouble areas that we work on.
Now, again, just to refresh the board's memory, we were looking at doing the secondary component, but uh, Mr. Frangio, it's my understanding we're unable to staff that, correct?
We're unable to do our steam camp, we'll have recovery and mediation for two weeks.
And that's the middle school, high school, private cover.
We do that through the.
Next one is boarding peers, public school employees, retirement system, retirees, it's uh, substitutes.
So what this would allow us to do, now, we utilize Kelly anyway, but it, it gives us an optional table. Let's say Dr. Dato, you want to be a peers retiree, but come back and sub for the future certified school nurse. It would allow us to do that and it wouldn't impact your peers.
That would be, it would be considered ninety-nine essential.
No, there's no paper there.
Oh, they are.
There's at least only one.
Student old summer. Or those approval. Increase bus drivers. Substitute during summer. Immediate, okay, so we're amazing. Any questions on that? Elementary secretary condition. The way on a name.
So we have a name that I need to consult. Word leadership. Range compensation, that little, we had not extend them compensation.
Okay. Twenty-two, twenty-three, eight. A rates. So in here, these are individuals that fall outside of the court of bargaining unit, as well as any other group that we have. Well, instructional clerical aids, the BOAG teacher tutor. Event manager. School police officers. The school district nurse, summer tech assistant. Bus monitors, athletic director, assistant athletic director. Any questions on this? Okay. Uh. An auxiliary unit advisor. Christine Green is a head auxiliary unit advisor, or is the?
Uh, Spartanets.
Okay, so, okay. Just trying to think, do you have a lady's name before I quit? Yeah, okay.
For anyone, I want to thank um, Mr. Allman, PSCA, President, we were able to expedite. Posting, take action on this. Because you let um. Posting with the timeline, et cetera, et cetera, but.
And we also have an assistant for that role, Nina Staskin. Subject J, we got professional development workshops and seminars. For our staff who attend behavioral support, professional learning, meeting meetings. We've got additions to the volunteer non-instructional substitute listing. Item L, retirement reservations. One here, we have Ms. McBride. Mr. Harold. Yeah, that's, yeah, it's a lot. Randy was very engaged in it. To say the least. He's gonna be a couple more places. Uh, item number ten, board action units committed to hold. Lawrence County, County Fairground, approve Lawrence County Fairground parked vehicles again this year on the blacktop surfaces. I don't think there's any changing, changes to the wording that we used in past years. Will be responsible for cleaning up after. Agreement with. Pray. Family Services. Through the attachment group between the school district and pray.
Have any questions?
Yes, so. The student agreement, we used to do with the fairgrounds, how does that work now? You know what they do? Do they tie in?
They tie in, their line does break down one way.
Oh, because they did that one, okay.
Oh, do you mean versus what they used to?
Yeah, they used to use ours.
Uh, we have another twat for pray. Two twats for pray.
One's regular, one's special.
Uh, the school comp, uh, comprehensive plan. About your thanks, comprehensive, comprehensive plan for the middle school district.
No, I need to decide the actions we can spread it in the state.
I don't remember this.
Bringing in assessment, but she talked about how our food in the cafeteria now supplements our wellness policy.
So no more August, maybe two, three lines?
No, no, um, Vance is getting posters. And wheat pieces. All the wheat crust. Light on sauce, definitely on the wheat.
Uh, except for like elementary district or, Dan?
There are still some lines on the one I have, uh, questions out, there, there's three bids, so I should actually have to, I'm healthy defender, that work, making great choice. Um, the races are always, they seem like always in each other, sound too terribly out of whack, at least, but um, a couple of questions about installation dates and that. But I hope to have that information by next week, otherwise before, I have to do this live. The bid um, that'll be uh, put out, said we would award it by July, just in case we got some.
Um, let's talk about the asphalt ceiling and the fairpits. Virgin bird of body, it's a crazy cake and what's.
Wow.
Last time I checked, they still use diesel.
Was it all of the bids or just one? Like all across the board or was there an anomaly?
We only had two for paving, um, three for ceiling.
Okay.
And the ceiling bids were all about three, three grand um, each, in, 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 I don't know.
Yeah.
Um, the beaming, so the next highest bid, which I forgot to list off, it um, was four feet.
You got it in the attached documents.
Yes.
Lena was at thirty-six, seven, Protec was at forty, forty-nine, four.
For the, um, that would be.
Area A and then area B, Selena was also lower at ninety thousand, seven, nine, seven, five, and Protec was at eleven thousand. Thank you.
Uh, agreement to sell or purchase meals, will be approved in next week. Uh, first the attached quote for insurance, for insurance, they go up by. Five thousand. Five hundred.
Pretty big.
I have a question too, um, it's because of the, they do inventory and then, um, Craig, every year, I can ensure that's on that.
Okay, so the change on the end.
Um, I think you're right, well, I've been very close with new buses, new buildings.
Not a bus, not any, you don't know.
Big for yourself.
I, I've been asked this question.
New band too, as you say, new, new band, no?
Obviously, because I mean, I have to.
Um, and I'd like to point out that if we pull the waters on out of this, um, as the next motion, um, being as that, at the end, it was get a lower price for the, the rest of the insurance is what, what we've been with this one, but we've all, um, for some time.
That's a big issue. I stand on page one, just to spell check.
Okay, um, of the, uh, phone or the, uh, work is all part of it. Oh, yeah, I see it.
It's not real, more real.
So do I.
Yeah. Well, I had, um, already, I had anticipated a redocum in that, so it's already reflected in the.
Yeah, if you could just ask a question about the, the delta that's on that floor. Um, twenty-two, twenty-three voluntary student accident in our stories, stories to get in charge. Same as last year. Written for technical purposes.
Ten ninety-nine support person.
Uh, district health and safety plan.
So every six months, it's still supposed to come to you and say it was reviewed, and at this time we are recommending no changes.
Item N, real estate tax rate. So, recommendation of the finance committee to the board that the real estate tax rate from twenty-two, twenty-three school year, eight fourteen, five oh two mills, which is up from fourteen dot one, seven, six. This increase is dot three, two, six mills, representing the median taxpayer of thirty dollars and fifty-one cents. So just for the board, not let Lance elaborate, the finance committee met, and the output of the finance committee was based on reviewing the state of moral and what we could get away with, right? What do we really need, which is what, what can we say here or there? The reflection after that was we might need the right taxes. Uh, they had a discussion, and I believe Lance and the, and the rest of the team decided that that would be in the best interest of the district and the most fiscally responsible action of that.
Not the whole team.
So, um, and obviously there's people at home listening and it's available online, so, um, the thing that I, I and several other people had brought up is right now, without any tax increase, I think we got the budget down to what, a six hundred thousand dollar deficit? Yeah, probably six, sixty. And, I mean, we're charged with, A, you know, trying to be stewards of taxpayers' money, but first and foremost, we're here to keep the lights on in this building. So, um, you know, we don't want the immediate pain of going towards the index, but, you know, it was, I think a plurality and, and I think a majority decision, we'll see who's, uh, yeah, Wednesday, I'm sorry. We'll see Wednesday if that holds true, that although this doesn't fix the problem, um, the thought was, you know, if you had a boat that had a leak in it and the guy said, well, don't even try plugging that, it's not going to solve it completely, just let, let the water in. Well, I don't think anybody would do that, you'd do whatever you could to try to slow the water coming in a little bit. And that's kind of the approach we took, um, thirty dollars per household, but it generates us what, a hundred and?
Hundred and one.
And also. Ten thousand dollars.
And also the other piece of that is homestead, homesteads will be fine, which isn't reflected in this motion. So homestead, farmstead represents an average decrease of forty-six dollars, of which we're asking for thirty and still need those median households with a net decrease of sixteen dollars. I don't know when in the course of human events you can ever raise your mileage, but it amounts to be a net tax decrease for your sins.
But, but on the reverse side, on the open, on the opposite side of that, you want to be good to the taxpayers, then this school board should say, I'm going to hold benefits and salaries so we can head towards backflow to raise taxes and spend it on salaries and benefits, you're still going to die.
Nope, nobody's disagreeing to downward trajectory, what you're bringing up is already water.
Life support.
Is, is water over the dam.
Yes.
That's something that is for the negotiations team, that the contract is voted on and set in stone. We're dealing with the repercussions of a fiscal situation that worth six hundred thousand dollars in the hole. That's, that's a fact. We can talk about benefits, and I'm sure when the teacher's contract is up, but the fact of the matter is the ramification of the last contracts, our building improvements, capital improvements, parking lots, et cetera, et cetera, we got a roof coming next year. Basically, you know, we have a roof coming next year that's going to eat this tax increase, every dollar plus some, what's that, what do you think that roof's going to cost next year? Yeah, I mean, I don't think we're going to, we got a roof that's going to cost seven hundred thousand dollars and we're rating it one.
But you've got to slow it down somewhere, Jeff, I mean, you can't keep, you're getting installed just the roof, I'll walk around, your stuff, we're cutting out of, I'm wishing we cut out of the budget.
I, I understand at all.
Cut until you, and, and I agree with you about the teachers, like you said, benefits, when we go into the contract, we need to look at that, but.
I think you need to show the taxpayers your movement somewhere.
I, I'm glad, Amber, I'm glad you brought that up. What did we cut? We cut spending from what, a three to one margin? We cut three dollars for every dollar we raised taxes, is that right, Justin?
We shuffled, there was shuffling of positions, nobody lost the, so there wasn't a sacrifice there. I'm with Jeff, I think I'm a, I'm not a no on this, I'm more of like a hell no on this, you've got to keep cutting the mills out here. I mean, you've got people paying five dollars at the pump, they're paying five to twenty percent more at the grocery store. And we're talking about, and we're talking about, we're still going to have over seven million in reserve. We got people hurting in this community. It is, it's just, it's.
So you raised taxes, it's going to be broken in seven years, don't you tell me, this school's on life support.
Gentlemen, we're going to vote on this next week. The objective that I had was for the finance committee, right, who ultimately the three of you came up with them.
And, and I think that disagreement is healthy, I'm glad we're not one of those boards that comes out and everybody sits there and looks down like, okay, don't say anything, we're just going to vote on this, and it's yes, no, yes.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
So have at it, I, I, I think the community should see that we argued an hour and a half whenever that finance committee, but, you know, from, from one point of view to the other. So, you know, would we, would I be, would I be in support of a, um, a tax increase if we only had a hundred thousand dollar shortfall? Absolutely not. But when we started paring down this budget, we were in a million dollar shortfall. And let's, let's not forget, if we cut so far, why the hell wouldn't somebody just put their kid in private school? If you cut services and cut offerings and cut facilities, at a certain point, people are going to go, hmm, I'll just take my money elsewhere. I mean, there's, and I get it, slash and burn people and fire, I get it, whatever. But the fact of the matter is, we're not going to do that, so we got to figure out how we can slow the, the downward spiral and.
What's the end result, sir? It's been six years, seven years, we still work, whether you raise taxes or you don't.
I think we want to be the school that's in the best financial shape possible in the whole area.
That's, that's our job, our, our number one charter is to look out for this district, number one.
By what we're doing here, we're putting Laurel in a much better position, rather be in a position of strength than a position of weakness.
How's a hundred and ten thousand make you stronger?
That's a hundred and ten cumulative every year, that, that, that's all going to add up over time, just like retirement, Jeff. And, and you know what you did with your retirement, it's the same thing.
We, we voted last month on first read that had no tax increase, this is eight.
Actually, we just voted, we just said that we weren't going to raise above the event. That's it, that's the only thing we came out to say, and we all agreed that that, that's definitely something.
Right, no, you're right, you're right, thank you.
Don't you want, don't, don't you want the school to be in a strong position now, Justin?
Bobby, I still think we're okay.
I, I think by doing this, we're in a better position.
Too far to go. You spend more than a week, more gas, I mean. I could, I, I could handle, and here's the thing. I know there are people that can handle it, I know there are people that have homesteads and stuff, but it, it doesn't affect them as much as having, there's a lot of people. This is, it's an eleventh hour, shuffling it down here, it's bad again. That's what it feels like. I'm not, I'm not, it's not, I'm not fighting anybody in particular, I'm just saying just my thoughts. And I'm not, I'm not, but I'm not, but look, I'm not voting you in, I'm not saying that, we're in, the guys are the finance.
Somebody can see that it's pushing up the level.
Well, here's what I'm going to say, this is my two cents. This is the correct time to have the discuss, this is not an eleventh hour. This is a methodical process that happens every year at the same time with the same process. So it's not a last minute thing. Here's where I'm going to say, seventy percent, more than seventy percent of the people in the district that pay taxes do not have kids in the district. And those are the folks that feel the pain, right? If you've got kids in school, you see the advantage of, hey, I, I don't mind paying taxes to have the extra bus run and make sure my kid or my kid's friends whoever have a bus, have a nice building, have extra curators, it's great. But the seventy plus percent that don't, just wonder, right? I have earned time raising taxes, when we have a front office that's very healthy, that by raising the taxes only gains us a hundred thousand dollars. Bobby, you're absolutely right, it is a compound number, right? But in the grand scheme of things, is it going to bail us out that much versus what people have to deal with? And I see both sides, and I'm struggling with which way I want to go. But the homestead act, what percentage of the people in the district are eligible for the homestead act?
Anyone that owns the home, it is their primary residence.
You're going to say house to paper?
Oh, yeah. There's two, there's the homestead and there's the farmstead, so the homestead applies anybody that might not.
And what percentage of the district actually utilizes that?
There's, we have two hundred and, two thousand sixteen thirty parcels that are in that, approved in that program by the county. We have a little over forty-four hundred parcels total, I couldn't tell you how many are residential, how many are commercial, how many I don't know.
So roughly, yeah.
Sixty percent.
I mean, to be honest with you, I mean, I'm, I'm forced, right, at the end of the day, trying to balance fiscal responsibility, which we owe as a board to our district versus what we see people out in the community and the world that can do. I get the emotion of it, but at the end of the day, what's, what's best?
What, are we still going to be the second with this tax rate in accounting after this?
We'll be number one.
So if you go, if you go halfway to the index, we'll remain seven of eight in terms of that.
And then when's this ESSR's fantasy land money run out?
We have to spend it by nine thirty of twenty twenty-four. So again, yes, the end is nine thirty.
So we got a seven hundred thousand dollar roof and then, uh, we're using money from COVID that in two years is going to vanish and we're going to have to come up with from somewhere else. So if you build a roof and you lose ESSRs, what, would you put that on debt set up? We didn't have ESSR.
We're at five fifty or six hundred and sixty.
I have another seven.
As, as root.
Looking at million and a half to two million now.
Oh, well, yeah.
That's what I say, a hundred and ten thousand, that's like paying a fifty bucks on your mortgage.
If I'm on the board someday, whether I'm voted out or I decide not to run, if I'm going to hand somebody an enormous sandwich, at least I can look them in the eye and say, I tried to win something, not. It was just, it was so big, we just said the hell with it, that's my take on it, nothing personal, feel like trying to do something's better, because it's coming this. Yes, this year, we have a, what is it, seven, seven million dollar fund miles, we're raising higher, doesn't that seem insane?
And you know what else is coming?
We're being, we're being proactive for that tsunami coming.
And you know, and you know what else is coming? A huge recession, probably something that I've never seen before, it's coming. Okay, we can.
Is over leveraged, they don't have the arms, so you're not going to see that crash, we're seeing inflation, but it's not overheating, it's, it's, it's hard to explain, but we're not, we don't have all these arms and second mortgages and lower, the lending standards and stuff that we saw in two thousand eight, everybody's waiting for two thousand eight to happen. We're going to have a, a recession, we actually need a recession to cool that inflation, but the idea that we're going to see the housing market crash is just not over leveraged like inflation.
Oh, I'm saying that I, I'm saying we got to live through it, we can't control any of that, but we, but people have to live through it, survive. This gas price hasn't even begun to see the top. With war, yep.
Another vision.
Yep, Washington State already did.
That's what you want.
Yeah, you'll buy that electric car that don't go anywhere twice.
I'll leave one at work, so when it breaks down.
What you do?
Does it take twenty-four hours to dirty?
To full charge. You get an eighty percent charge in forty-five minutes and that can get you.
Amber, you can't leave a crisis to waste.
Well, that's what he said. Okay, let's move on, we're done with that.
Stay hidden for a week from now.
Well, you got one more time and then we'll go. I'm at the end of the hell.
Why, you got anything to say?
Uh, no, I mean, I'm, I'm torn as well, but it, it's just a bad year for me. So, yeah, let's, let's just take a roll, roll call votes, all I ask for.
Uh, general fund budget, starting at breeding, will be next week.
I thought you looked messy with snitch.
So Jeff, I don't know how you need to do it for next week, because the, the very next item, right? Item O, depending on the vote of the board on the real estate.
Who changed that revenue number?
Uh, item P, homestead, farmstead resolution. Uh, doc the attach resolution. So it'll be, or ought to be, I'm just saying. Do we have any new business?
We, we got afternoon executive session.
Executive session, we got us the compensation.
Okay, item number twelve, comments or questions from the board relative to a general item? Jeff, come on, I know you got time to say, John? Please talk me out of your petty text. Then I will adjourn this weekend. We'll let everybody know.
Thank you. Back to the other one, Dick.
Go back to the first one here.